Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon Fios, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the municipal building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
... So, as you may enter, Councilman Knight, Mayor in 1969.
Wow.
And a longtime basketball coach, director of athletics, track coach, and I'm sure he coached something else in there at the Scotch Plains High School. He came to Scotch Plains in 1953 during my senior football season as the freshman football coach. And, you know, his family grew up here and very well-respected person who contributed to the history of Scotch Plains. Thank you.
I want to thank you for coming forward and sharing that with us. That is seriously something we should have recognized. Godspeed, Mayor, and Mr. Terry.
Incidentally, it was 88 S. Lane Park, living in some...
Once again, thank you, Mr. Terry. Godspeed, Mayor, and for a bedroom community, it's good that we recognize former mayor. It's 1969.
Hi, Mark Ginsburg, 40 Spuce Mill Lane. The reason I got up and I'm going to do it periodically unless I convince the Mayor Council to do it more routinely is to encourage people to go on the town website and to sign up for the e-bulletins and Code Red. I sign up for both. I get emails and texts from Sergeant Hernandez almost every day, but usually for road paving and road closure situations and the website updates. I think it's important, maybe could even be embedded on the telecast to remind people. It's an important service that's really gotten better and better over time that we should keep reminding people to sign up for. I don't know how many numbers have at this point, but, you know, until the whole town does, I think we should beat that drum. And my only one comment regarding it, and I mentioned it to the town manager earlier today when I saw him, the Code Red sign up, I find it's a little cumbersome to get to it and find it. You need to go to the police tab, then to the emergency service tab. Maybe that can be embedded on the homepage to directly go to the Code Red especially. That's so important. So, that was my only comment.
That's a very thoughtful comment. Thank you very much for coming forward with that, and hopefully we'll take your advice.
Hi, my name is Chris Thompson. I live on 2323 Redwood Road. I opened that email that the Mayor discussed earlier about the ad hoc committee, and I was told that there was no such record. Now, in view of the fact that Mr. Doyle admitted that there was such a letter, I was wondering if I can resubmit my request for any, for that email and any additional such records.
I believe what we understand, ma'am, is that there ought to be minutes taken, there to be provided to the clerk, so I think they should be forthcoming, and I believe Mr. Doyle will do exactly what he promised he would do. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor.
Police?
A working product, Mrs. Thompson? A working product of a committee, ad hoc committee, by law, is not operable, and therefore, any notes or memos or minutes that have been requested through an open public records request are not required to be delivered to that request. Now, the conversation that took place tonight is slightly different, which is that the minutes or whatever will be provided to the clerk, but in the previous Oprah or open public record request, I was, I, being a recipient of one of those emails, was counseled by our township attorney that a working product is not subject to Oprah.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll refer back to my earlier comment, in which case someone should not, and I think you would agree, have taken license on emailing you as a member of the governing body here because that was not your intention, I believe. Correct?
I agree. No, I agree. I absolutely agree.
And the only, the only comment, Councilman, I would have is that, once it was done, the remainder of the council should have been made aware of it. So, that said, ma'am, once again...
Carolyn Perkins, 861 Westfield Road. Regarding those minutes, I'm hoping that the copies will be made available at the reference library from Mr. Doyle. Is that an unreasonable request?
Miss, we, I don't, I don't believe it is. I, one who's not a promoter of secret governments, and what's being discussed, I don't think is so proprietary that it can't be made available.
Okay, just two comments...
To be continued, but I'm not saying it will be.
Okay, okay. Just two comments regarding the fire sprinklers that Mr. LaCosta spoke about. I do hope that the council will go for that and give their opinion. It does decrease your insurance cost, your homeowner's insurance, and I know for a fact that I have a fire hydrant on my front lawn, and I get a, I get a discount for my house insurance, okay? Thank you very much for passing that resolution regarding fixing the roof on Shady Rest. I just did speak to Jerry during the intermission. I'm hoping now that it gets put together and goes out for bids, okay? Because your next big meeting will be September 16th. Jerry feels that if it can be put together and the bids are received, they would be received by September 14th. So, hopefully by September 16th, you will have been able to make a decision. Tonight, we have a flood watch, so do a lot of praying, and I am not so much worried about the snow as I am about Superstorm Sandy and Hurricane Irene. That did more damage to homes and roofs than you can really recall. It's like a horror story. So, that roof is a priority, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, for coming out again, and your comments last week were understood, and we thank you for these again. Ms. Heidemeyer, yes, you address, please?
Ilsa Heidemeyer, 1380 Carroll Road, Scotch Plains. Mr. Terry asked a very good question of the architect. He said, "If they go beyond Plan A, is there a chance that we would lose the historic recognition and the chance for grants?" And the architect said, "Yes." In other words, we can't go beyond Plan A, otherwise we'll lose everything.
I think that's correct.
Is that right?
Yeah, I believe that is what Mr. Barton Ross shared with us.
Okay, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Now, another thing, this is a question I have to ask. It's, you know, the past, but I would like to know, and other people would like to know. Was the ordinance for preserving Shady Rest at Scotch Hills in September of 2013?
I'm sorry, can you ask that one more time?
The ordinance that the Mayor and Council all passed, was that September of 2013?
Can't say for certain, but I believe it was. I believe, I believe that may be right, but I can't say for certain. I don't have that in front of me.
And that was only concerning the roof, right?
No, it was concerning getting funds moved from, some bonds, you know, and you may want to further explain how we manipulated some money to be able to fund this.
That ordinance only allowed the township to move funds from one old bond ordinance to a new, for, I'm sorry, let me ignore that.
Take two again.
That bond ordinance, that ordinance passed in September of 2013, allowed the Township Council to change the name of the existing bond ordinance and change the potential uses of those funds, and that was it.
And when was that portion of the architect's report completed?
Long after that, not until 2014.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because who else has the authority to ask for a further report from the architects? Because I'm sure the Mayor and Council didn't ask for that.
The architect had a scope of work that was passed via RFP, that was approved by the council, and he followed through with that scope of work, receiving its finished product.
I, I think I know what you're asking, but I...
Well, you will stick to Plan A, otherwise...
I think, I think I know what you're asking. I don't think it was authorized by the council to answer your question. The additional facilities...
Can you talk in your microphone?
Yeah, I can.
Good.
I, I think to answer your question, was that, that additional scope of work was not something that originated from this council.
Okay, so who, who ordered that?
The RFP actually specifies that the architect present forth several options, and if you read the RFP, you'll see that.
To be continued. Thank you, Mr. Giles.
And they have the authority to do that?
That's what the RFP said to, for them to do.
Okay. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you're going to do something with the roof, and I'm glad you're going to stick to Plan A, otherwise we'll lose the historic recognition and the chance of getting bonds. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out, as always. Anyone else like to address the council? Seeing no one, we're going to move on with some other business. Tonight, we have a couple of ordinance, public hearing and final adoptions. Let's begin with ordinance 2014-006, Ms. Lucina.
An ordinance incorporating the sum of $244,000 in the New Jersey Department of Transportation in connection with a project known as West Quad Street Village in Towne, Chris Bayville.
Deputy Mayor?
I move that the public hearing on this ordinance be opened.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, do we need a vote on the roll call, a vote to open this? The voice vote, okay. Council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would anyone like to address the council with reference to this ordinance? Hearing no one, we'll, we'll move on. Councilman?
Yes, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman?
I move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and be advertised according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is, this is the roll call. That's where I got confused, Council, before. I'm getting old.
Mrs. Jelenella?
Hi.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Razzie?
Aye.
Mayor Blumberg?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2014-007, Ms. Lucina.
An ordinance supplementing amendment to revise general ordinances of the Township of Scotch Plains, Chapter 7, entitled Traffic, with regard to parking restrictions on Homestead Terrace.
Deputy Mayor?
I move that the public hearing on this ordinance be opened.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to address the council with reference to this ordinance? Please state your name and address, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Joe Bordeaux.
You've got to speak directly.
27 Homestead Terrace.
Thank you, sir.
I've been there about 11 years. I've seen us go through iterations of the traffic. I'm against the traffic. I think everybody should park where they are. We get a lot of folks that park on Homestead to begin with. We get folks that live on Westfield Road as well park on there because they can't park on Westfield Road. What you're doing is you're squeezing the folks that are dropping their children off, which all over my years, I haven't seen it to be a problem, but you're squeezing those folks to actually get out earlier to have, to get to less prime spots, causing more problems in the long run. Once again, we had problems with signage, going back to Mayor Marks. We had reiterations of the same thing a few years ago that didn't work. I just think that it's going to take away, it's going to cause neighbor problems. People have to park on one side in order for me to mow my lawn. I would have to ask my neighbor to move their car. I think it's very inconvenient. It's going to take away from the charm of the neighborhood. I please, I ask if you could reconsider at least option. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming out.
Hi, my name's Robert Berwick. Live on 20 Homestead Terrace, and I'm not exactly sure why we're going through this again. I guess we had this issue a few years ago. I'm not sure if anybody actually got hurt or something, but I guess my, my concern is I've lived in Scotch Plains for 50 years. I grew up here. We've never had an issue, and all of a sudden now, we're seeing these, these changes being proposed. What I've, what I've seemed to observe is with no parking over on Redwood, that caused additional traffic on Homestead, okay? By adding now parking restrictions on Homestead, it seems to me what will happen is that there'll be more parking on possibly Woodland and other adjacent streets. It just seems somewhat intuitive that all we're doing is we're pushing out people that are going to be restricted from parking just to park in another area. So, you're not really resolving anything. All you're doing is moving people from one spot to another spot. You're still going to have issues with, with safety. I think if you're really truly concerned about kids with safety and you're concerned about them not being on the streets, then the parking should be, or the drop-off should be on school property. It should not be on the streets. I think you're going to have natural things happen, snowstorms, there's going to be snow buildup on the streets. They're going to be in the streets no matter what you do. Leaf pickup. If for some reason this ordinance is passed, if I want to have some work done on my house, where, where do I tell the builders to park? Where, where are they going to be? Also, I think, I think in, in general that it just, it just seems to be creating additional problems that just shouldn't be happening, and I think that it should be reconsidered. And again, as I'd mentioned, I think, you know, if, if we're really truly concerned about the kids, then the parking should be done within school constraints and not on the street. My driveway is not very big. We have kids. It's going to be creating all sorts of inconveniencing, inconveniences for us as well as our neighbors if I have to park across the street. And, you know, I think, I think it's just not the right direction at all, you know, and I, and I really kind of hope that we, we go a different path.
Thank you so much for coming out, sharing those thoughts with us. Thank you.
My name is Kirk. One, I live on Homestead Terrace, 10 Homestead Terrace. I'd really ask you to reconsider this. There is not a safety issue. I have not heard of any type of injuries or any type of near injuries. There will be a parking problem if you were to do this, especially during the leaf removal period or during the snow removal periods, as Bob said, because you'll have buildup, you'll have people parked, they'll be fighting for spots, and it will create neighbor problems. It is vastly different than what's being done right now on Redwood. The density on Redwood is much different than the density on Scotch Plains. The lot sizes are much, much further apart. The houses are much further apart. There's much more room for parking over there than there is on Homestead Terrace. There are other ways to skin the cat here. You could route traffic around, create one way, you know, from, enter Redwood, come around through Muir and down Homestead. There are other ways to skin the cat here. I, I do think it really does affect quiet enjoyment, which we are entitled to, and I would also suggest that, you know, this is like an iteration of what would be next? You go to Monica Place or another street where there's density, where there are very narrow streets, and we are going to say, "What? We couldn't fit a, a, a fire engine down those streets, so therefore people can't park on those streets any longer." So, again, this is about rights and quiet enjoyment, again, within the parameters of safety, so there are other ways to skin the cat. So, I'd ask you to reconsider, please.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Berwick, and I live at 20 Homestead Terrace. I think it was about two years ago I came and addressed the council on the same sort of situation, and I believe at that time, you all came to the conclusion that this was not the right path to go down. I am confused why we're going through this again. It seems that it's going to happen every two or three years. I would appreciate if we could come to an agreement that we find a solution that will not affect us as citizens, taxpayers, and that we are not inconvenienced by having to juggle our cars around to satisfy some entitled school parents.
Thank you so much for coming out and sharing that with us.
My name is William McLaughlin. I'm a resident of Homestead Terrace over 50 years. I've witnessed everything in that school that's been going on since the school was first started. The traffic conditions in the last few years are horrendous. Homestead Terrace is going to be a scene of a very serious accident, and the parents better decide a little inconvenience or a serious accident. They don't have any other choice. The children, their minds are four miles from their feet, and they're all over the place, and these cars parked on both sides of the street, and then those entering and leaving, some in a hurry, some not in a hurry, there's going to be a serious accident. I've been retired for 20 years, and I'm observing the afternoon sessions every day, and one day is no better than the other. And I hear the suggestion, "Oh, the people are careful." Well, I got news for you. I witnessed 10 traffic violations minimum a day because they make U-turns, and the sign posted, "No U-turns," and making U-turns in that congestion is going to cause a fatality. So, I heard you, and I joined with the police department. It's working in Redwood Terrace, and it should work in Homestead Terrace to save the lives of a child.
Thank you, sir, for coming out. I'm going to ask the council to make any comments. Obviously, we've, we've had some, a bit of discussion, but first, I'd like, Chief, can you weigh in just one more time for those who weren't paying or listening to our last telecast, what this is all about?
Mayor, will you comment before you do that, or will you make a public comment?
Well, the public comment that I will, if we need to do that, we'll close the public comment, seeing no one coming forward. So, we'll make that official, and I'll turn to the chief.
Do we need a motion to close the public comment? We didn't do it.
Okay. We have, may have a motion to close the public comment.
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief Mahoney?
Mayor and council, thank you. We have been going over this for some number of years now. I've listened to many of the comments, both from school parents and residents of Homestead I can agree with, with a lot of the comments, and, and I think in some respects, I agree with the comments, but I don't agree with the end result of the comments. Mr. Berwick made some very good comments, which I do agree with. That's exactly what we're trying to do. We are trying to move the parking. We are trying to spread the parking so there's more room for cars to pass, there's more room for kids to walk in the street, so we can avoid the consequences that Mr. McLaughlin was talking about. There, there may be some level of inconvenience, both to the school parents and to the residents where this is concerned. We've tried different drop-off configurations. One of the other comments was that, you know, "We went down this road a couple of years ago." Well, the council didn't decide a couple of years ago not to enact the ordinance. What they did ask us to do was to do more studies and work with the Board of Ed to try to come up with a different solution. We can't come up with that solution, so we're looking to pass this ordinance so that we can make the area safer for the school kids.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Giles, we have our engineer with us. Is there further commentary we should hear?
If you want him to kind of just rediscuss what you discussed last week for the sake of the public, he certainly can do that.
I think it would be helpful.
We had met with the school board and looked at a lot of the alternatives that were on school property, and basically, due to the configuration of the existing streets, the narrowness of the, the property of the school, location of playgrounds, there really wasn't a real good alternative. We did look at bringing the vehicles in off of Redwood and alongside of the school. It prevent, it presented a lot of conflicts on the exit onto Westfield Road because of the configuration of the two cross streets where people would come out and immediately try to duck across. There'd be an increase of potential accidents there. We had issues with the students being on the wrong side of the cars and having to be walked in front of a car, even with the school aide. You could have a parent who's starting to drive off, thinking the kid is going around the back of the car. So, it, it wasn't really a good alternative. So, the, I guess the Board of Ed then decided to support the park, excuse me, the parking restrictions that are being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lyons from the council?
I, I have a couple...
Or from the chief of police? Or any comments you might have on this subject?
You know, I'm, I have to tell you that I'm really struggling with this, and I know it doesn't seem like something that should... I, I get it because I, I live there. I live on Concord Road. I know exactly what you're talking about when you talk about the fact that the lots are not as wide as Redwood. I, I understand those thoughts completely, and I, I'm having a great deal of difficulty really determining what is the right thing here. Not, I, I have to say, the pieces that I, I disagree with respectfully is, you know, when, when we buy a home near a school, it, there are sometimes consequences, or there are, are things that happen as a byproduct of that. I purchased my home. I knew that I was near two schools. I'm very sympathetic to the taxes that our, our residents pay. I am, full disclosure, full disclosure, a Brunner mom. I, I don't feel that I've heard from entitled parents. What I, what I've heard from attending a lot of these meetings, a lot of them, is genuine concern, genuine concern on the part of the residents who live near the school for, for child safety. I've heard that. I have not heard anybody stand up and say, "I don't care if children get injured." I believe everybody here is, is very genuinely concerned about safety. The piece that I'm worried about is this. I do believe that this is being brought forward to us with a genuine belief that this is the only solution that we can arrive at. I'm having a difficult time with that because of one of the points that was raised, this idea that we're really just pushing it further back, and I've experienced both parts of it. I've experienced dropping her off and picking her up in the car on days that I was able to do that, and I've experienced walking, and I see parents parking a lot on Concord and using the path. The path is a good thing, but quite frankly, we've had to have several conversations about that path not being maintained. So, even with that, there's questions as far as responsibility and maintenance and upkeep. I, I would wonder this because my vote tonight is just going to be about what we really feel is the safest thing for the kids. I might have some neighbors who are mad at me. I, I'm still not, I don't know what I'm doing yet, but I'm, I have a couple of questions. So, so I think that I've said more than one time that I was a school administrator and clerk for a long time. I dropped my, my children off today before going to work at my sister's house. My sister still lives right there, and they have an elementary school, Valley Road School, that is figured in, in a lot of, is configured in a lot of ways that are similar to our Brunner school because Valley Road School lets out right before their Parkway Circle. And you have not only the Parkway traffic in the morning and the traffic flow from Valley Road School, but you have traffic for Mother Seaton School that's also right there in the morning. There was a shared service conversation, and I, I'm not sure on the budgeting for this, so I don't want to speak out of turn on that, but I know that there was a lot of meetings, there was involvement from the township and the school board, and they did cut through to change the drop-off pattern there because of a lot of the similar, similar concerns from what I'm hearing today. And... And basically, some, some money was spent. I don't know whose money it was. It was the taxpayers' money in one way or another, but money was spent. And I'm just asking this. So, when we create an ordinance, obviously, they can be revisited, but an ordinance is a law and it's not something to be taken lightly. Is there any way that, considering that this is a, a neighboring town, that you can, through the police department, enact this as an emergency measure if you feel that this is necessary? And we, I'm, I'm asking, I'm not...
Temporary, please.
So, how long is a temporary basis?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't think we can do anything for more than a month at a time.
Okay, so that...
We have to pass a resolution, whether it be construction on the municipal building. The council had to pass a resolution, allow unless there is required, a concept in place, so we can have room for police officers.
My, my piece here is this. I really don't believe that this makes it any safer for those kids, because this is the piece that, I mean, so what happens now on the next block is the same thing that's happening on, that, you know, we're not leave, we're... But then the other, the other flip side of what I'm struggling with is that there's a lot of people that I really trust that are weighing in on this and saying this is the right thing to do. So, I guess what I'm asking is this. Could we look at this at a, as a temporary measure and then at the same time, since Clark's already paid their money and they're doing their thing, see how that works over there and see if that's something that we should explore without passing an ordinance that is so definitive? Is that something that we could do?
I'm gonna look to the council.
No. I think the short answer is you just can't. You can't pass a temporary ordinance.
I don't, I, but I'm, but I know that the police department does have the ability to create parking restrictions.
But, but as Chief was talking about, I would even venture a use in weeks, probably is more like days.
Okay.
For an emergency.
It's not, it's not, there's emergency, but it's very different.
I mean, I think as you said at the beginning, you can always revoke an ordinance, is the committee. So, in that sense, any ordinance is temporary.
I feel like I'm being thick-headed here, but I just don't get it. What I don't get, that's a face, and that's not a nice face you're making at me, Chief.
No, that was to keep me involved.
Okay. So, I, here's what I don't get. I don't get, it's like this. I don't know. I'm trying to come up with an analogy. We're literally creating the same exact problem on other streets now.
I think you're looking at it the wrong way, because I don't think that you are, because if, if the traffic were to spread out, and the leaky, does the exact opposite of what you're saying. If people were just willing to park a little farther down the street, and only on one side of the street, we wouldn't have this problem. So, if, if 100% of the cars wanted to park on Homestead Terrace, for example, and now we can say, well, 25% of them are gonna park on Redwood and 25% on Homestead, and maybe some go to Woodland, maybe some go to Concord, and they use the path. That's better, because they're parked on one side of the street, there's no snow and leaves, you know, was another comment that was made. When the snow and leaves come, it's worse. It's a, it's 100% worse.
And I'm gonna tell you, quite frankly, leaf pickup in that neighborhood has been a little bit of a challenge. I mean, I...
And we, and we fight with, with, you know, and we are out there every time it snows or the leaves are there to make sure that the schools are one of the first areas that gets cleaned up.
Can people park on Mear? I don't remember. I guess maybe not where that green is, but people can park on Mear.
Yes. You can park on all the streets. There's plenty of parking around Brunner School.
So...
There's just not plenty of parking right next to the path.
I'm trying to get it. I really am. I'm really trying. So, here's my question, then. We still have not made any progress in adopting a real complete Streets to School. We haven't looked at any, we haven't looked at anything systemic, and this, to me, just still feels like a Band-Aid, and you know how I feel about that.
We haven't adopted the Complete Streets program at this point. You know, we'll enter into discussions...
Complete Streets or Safe, or Safe Roots to School, I'm sorry.
We'll enter into those discussions, but from what we know about those programs, they would, they would help us in a situation where we had parking on one side of the street only. You know, we, we share Westfield Road with Fanwood. Fanwood has, there's plenty of parking that takes place on Fanwood Streets across from Brunner School for drop-off and people that use the crossing guard in the front of the school that Fanwood pays for. All the streets in Fanwood around the schools are parking on one side of the street.
I, I feel really terrible, and I'm gonna apologize, because I, I, I feel like as the liaison from the school board, I should be supporting this. I, I just don't think it's the right solution to the problem, and I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't, I, I would really like to hear what my, my colleagues in the council have to say.
With that, Councilman Vastine, you wanna weigh in here, please?
Yes, Mayor. So, first and foremost, the desire is to improve safety for kids. I hear the sentiment of the neighbors, where they own property, they wanna be able to utilize their property, they wanna be able to park in front of their house if they so choose. But I also hear the chief, Sergeant Hernandez, the Board of Ed. I believe there was a meeting where two members of this governing body were there, and that there was somewhat, I thought, a consensus from those two attending that this concept made the most sense. I also recall that...
No.
...one of the things that was mentioned was that no one is under the delusion that this is the end-all answer. That ultimately, this is a stopgap measure as we approach the beginning of the school year to either provide more time and/or resources to be marshaled towards a more permanent solution for this. I have some ideas about how you can create a cross-through, but that's for another conversation. I mean, in life, people are typically not experts at many things, if experts at all. We, by no stretch of the imagination, are experts on every issue that comes before us. And in large part, we rely upon the experts to give us their advice after contemplation to make the decisions that we make. Sometimes those decisions are popular, sometimes they're unpopular. But the thing about leadership is that sometimes you have to make a tough decision. Sometimes not 100% of the people are going to agree with that decision. You can't waffle back and forth. You have to lead and not go back and forth with regards to your decision process. We've heard from Sergeant Hernandez, who's the traffic study officer in town. We've heard from the chief of police. We've heard from our township engineer, and we've heard from the Board of Ed, and they all support this concept. Who am I? I'm the one who has to make the decision. I'm sure it can be used against me in a campaign literature piece, but the reality of it is, it's the right decision regardless. And I apologize, and I'm sorry that it has an adverse effect on the people who live nearby, but in the end, as it's been presented to me, safety of small children is what I need to be, or that I'm focused on in making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Deputy Mayor, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, this is a tough call. This is truly a tough call. I, I don't believe that there is any perfect solution to this problem. Maybe there's some other solution that's a better solution, but right now, we're just not privy to what that is. We, we don't know what it is. So, you know, we are in the situation that we're in. I think many good comments have been made from both sides of the issue. You know, I feel like this is the proverbial, proverbial being stuck between a rock and a hard place, quite honestly. I'm wary to go against the recommendations of the police department and the township engineer. I think they're valid recommendations. I think they're sensible. However, I certainly hear what the residents are saying who live on Homestead Terrace. I suppose if I lived on Homestead Terrace, I would feel exactly the way that you do. And that makes it a difficult proposition to try to figure out what the best thing to do is. I'm intrigued by the suggestion of somehow the, the, the solution to be, if I can call it temporary, some type of temporary solution, but if that's not the correct legal way to make a decision on this issue, because you either vote to approve an ordinance or you do not, I suppose if the matter does get approved, that we can revisit it if the situation truly does not work. And that may unfortunately be, for those of us who have to make a call here, the most fair or sensible way to approach deciding what we need to do here. So, you know, we, we've heard valid reasons on both sides here, no question about it. To me, safety certainly is of paramount importance, but I, I clearly understand and identify with the sentiment of the neighbors who oppose the idea and feel like this is gonna be an intrusion upon themselves and interrupt their ability to have quiet enjoyment of their property and et cetera. I believe at this point that you have to make a choice, and with all due apologies to the neighbors, I respect your, your feelings about it, but I, I don't think we have any other potential solution at the moment. This is a proposal that has been endorsed also by the Board of Education. What I would suggest, if this matter does get approved, is that over the course of the next several weeks and months, that you make your opinions known and that folks come back to the council and that we get a report from the parties involved, from the police department, perhaps from the Board of Ed, and from the residents, to tell us what is happening. Is this improving the situation or not? And at that point, I think if we need to revisit this issue, then we'll need to revisit this, this issue. It, it's unfortunate, because there's, there's no, you know, there's no winner here, so to speak, but unfortunately, we're called upon to make a decision that we think is the best decision to make under the circumstances. So, unless I hear something to the contrary, with all due apologies to the residents, and I feel for you, I would, I would support the recommendations of the police and the engineering department and the endorsement of the Board of Ed to implement this program, and we'll see how it goes. I mean, nothing's written in stone, doesn't mean that this is gonna be the situation forever. And if it does not work as well as it might, then I think we need to know that, and then I think we need to address it at that time.
Thank you very much. Please?
Yes, I have some questions, Chief, and, and Mr. Lyons. In the deliberations, and I understand that these have been had by different parties who was at the Board of Ed for a while, and then you folks, I don't know what point you all got involved, but was it ever considered making Redwood one-way, coming off of Westfield Road, and then coming one-way out Homestead Terrace with a drop-off on the right-hand side immediately at the path?
Yes.
And why was that considered inferior to this? I mean, I grant, if we went that route, we'd have folks from Redwood here oppose, no doubt, but...
Right, and I feel that we, we looked at that. I believe we spoke to engineering about it. It's, it creates more problems with people then, residents coming out of their driveways. What time of day is it? It was suggested we make one-way streets during certain hours for drop-off and pickup, and...
You'd have to go one-way all the time, I think.
That was, that was problematic.
Understood. Um, you know, I don't have the historic context on this issue that some other folks here in the council have, given that this is my first year. I think it's a little interesting that we don't have folks most affected by it here to speak to it, although as a, as a parent of young children, I get it's, you know, past bedtime for those folks at this hour. Um, I guess my other question to the attorney would be, is there any way in an ordinance like this for us to insert language to sunset it at a certain period of time? Granted, maybe there isn't tonight, but let's say we decided we wanted to do that, could we pass this at a later date with a sunset provision? And what I'm really thinking here is you sunset it after one year. You give it a full chance to work, and then you see what the impact is. Because honestly, I don't think anybody really knows exactly what the impact is gonna be. We know some of the impacts, but where are people gonna go over to? I mean, we could end up with a hue and cry at the end of this year that, you know what? You restricted that parking, I'm having to walk from way too far away, please undo it. And we don't know what the output, the outcome is gonna be. And, you know, I think back to, you know, orgisational stuff. You put a, you put a tickler out there, something that's gonna trigger you to re-debate it rather than just say, "Oh, well, we'll come back to it." If there's not something that forces us to come back to it, eh, then things just get stuck.
Well, as you said, you wouldn't be able to do it tonight. I'd have to really look at the legality of it in the first place, but, you know, it's more than a tickler, because you got signs that you're gonna have to post. It's a law that's in place. I, I was trying to think, as you're talking about, if any example, whether it's state or local, statute or ordinance that has such a sunset provision, as you called it, and I can't think of any such circumstance. I mean, if you were inclined to wanna take a look at that, that's something that could be looked at. If I had to give you an answer tonight, I'd tell you, I don't think you could.
Can I?
Yes, Mayor. My, my general comment would be, I would, I would wish that many laws, that many levels of government could be passed with sunset provisions, so that they go away after a certain amount of time, and then if we really needed them, we'd re-institute them. You know, this, this is a tough one. I, I really, unfortunately, I do think my preference would be to see that we can, you know, I think we're experimenting here, but I think we have to experiment. I think that the fact that this issue, what I'm hearing is that it does bubble up year after year after year, says that there is, there is an issue going on. And that's not to denigrate the study, the work that's been done. It's, this isn't random experimenting, this is good educated guesses, but we don't know what human behavior is gonna be as a result of this. So, it is to an extent experimenting, and I'd really like to see that, that we have that mechanism to come back to it after a certain amount of time. So, I, you know, I'm not inclined to support this until we can, can have that mechanism in place.
Thank you. It's my turn to weigh in. I've sat here, as many of you know, since 2006, when Mayor Marx was the mayor, Marx was the mayor. And as many have stated, you know, this has come before the council, seems like every other year. And it just doesn't seem to be an easy solution. I just wanna clarify one thing real quickly. Councilman Vastine said there was a consensus that came out of our meetings. Councilwoman Jill and Ella, and I attended some Board of Ed sessions regarding this very sensitive subject, and it clearly wasn't a consensus. What there was a consensus for was to get additional information, and I think, Mr. Giles, you know, we discussed it, and we brought Bob here, Lyons, from, you know, our engineering group to do an analysis of, you know, parking in the area, what he thought, because we felt we should have someone, you know, with that kind of experience weigh in. I, too, you know, in trouble on which way to go, but I've gotta look toward public safety and to the folks who've weighed in on this from our professional staff. For that matter, you know, the chief of police from Fanwood, who was at one of these meetings, weighed in on this too, and he's of the same mind, that we need to move forward with the school is opening, you know, just about a couple of weeks. I just wanna, with that, neutralize some of Councilman Vastine's, I don't know if it's paranoia or concerns, about a campaign piece. And I'll do that by saying, Councilman, that I, I am supportive of what's being proposed with an understanding that Deputy Mayor, as well as Councilman Jones and Councilwoman Jill and Ella said, you know, what are our options going forward? Well, our options going forward would be if it didn't work, okay, we could repeal it. So, I'd be a proponent of putting it in there. And then, I think there was very thoughtful commentary by you all on, on what that option was, and I think, Chief, we could do that. And this council, if we find that it's made absolutely no improvement, we could revisit and unwind it, clearly, Council. So, you know, as I said, there's, there's no, this is not easy, but, you know, we're, we're here to lead, and I've heard this for, since 2006. Councilman, it's not gonna be a campaign piece from, because I'm not, you know, gonna say nay to this. So, I hope that, you know, calms any concern you might have, but I think we get on, we need to get on to business here. So, with that said, does anyone else have a comment before we move this forward?
I guess my final comment would be, you know, if there's no mechanism to put that in right now... in right now, I guess we, you know, we move this forward under the, you know, my understanding is this is an experiment and I definitely want to see us come back to it at the end of this school year and revisit.
So Giles, we can put that on our agenda right now. Okay. Mr. Jones? Do you think that would satisfy that concern?
We would have to wait.
And I know you will, and I think you will.
Yeah. Park Ernie out there and make sure the people aren't U-turning and all of that other stuff too.
Well, let's say, I believe that Councilwoman Jolene Eller, you had a comment before Deputy Mayor? Yes?
Yeah, I was hoping that we would have a very nice productive meeting tonight. I just, I mean, I guess maybe we could ask the attorney in the future to give us some guidance. I understand there's an election coming up, but if we could not spend our time up on the dais referring to the campaign, I think maybe just we might be a tad bit more productive. I, you know, I've thought a lot about this, I hear everything you guys are saying and I appreciate it. I'm the one who lives there, I'm the one whose child uses that school. I apologize, Chief, and I apologize tremendously to Sergeant Hernandez, whose opinion I respect a great deal. I don't plan on supporting this this evening, it doesn't sound like it's going to make very much of a difference, and I'll tell you, the reason I don't plan on supporting it more than anything else is it's not about making neighbors happy, and I've already said that piece. I'm sorry, you live near a school, there's sometimes there are, there are issues that come as a result of that. I just don't think it's a solution, and my concern is that if the council moves forward and adopts this ordinance today, this will become status quo, we will not put a complete streets policy into place, we will not look at the safe routes to school. The towns around us have done these things, we're behind in this matter, and I think it's time to really look at things systemically. This is a problem throughout the township and it's not something that can be addressed by restricting parking on one street. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you. I believe Deputy Mayor, you have a final comment?
Yes, thank you. It's more a question, and I'll put this to the chief, and that is, Councilman Jones made a suggestion about looking at this measure after a year. To me, I would think that we would have a pretty good idea about whether this new ordinance is working the way that we hope that it might after the end of, I guess it's the second marking period, or maybe, you know, by, you know, by December, Christmas Vacation, whatever it is. What I'm asking, Chief, is do you, do you think-
Keep it up, Chief. Keep it up, Chief.
Is that your answer to my question? I'm wondering, is, do you think that that's a fair way to look at it, or do you think that we really need to test it out for an entire year?
Do you think it's fair to the extent that in order for us to get-
Now pick up the microphone.
I think in order for us to get a clear view of the effectiveness of the ordinance, I would just like to see us get through leaves and snow.
Yeah, that's how-
You know, so December might be a little early, January, February, I'm sure, but we're confident that this would definitely improve safety in the area.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've all had a chance to weigh in on this. With that, it's time to, I'll tell you, Chief, we can dress you up, but we can't take you out. Leave that high-tech stuff alone. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and be advertised according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
No, I'm asking for a roll call vote. I'm a no.
It's an ordinance, you have to, you have to have an ordinance.
Jolene Eller?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Councilman? Did we, okay, I stand corrected. Okay, we're done.
Well, on that.
On that issue, all right. The next thing on our agenda, you know what we jumped on, that's what we did, we didn't quite do it here. Next item on the agenda is our consent, new business, or new business consent agenda, and if you could take us through that, Mr. Giles?
Sure. Thank you, Chief.
Resolutions 112, 113, and 114 relate to health services, 112 being the city of Wallway, for health services, 113 and 114 being various clinics for various types of diseases with Elizabeth, the city of Elizabeth. Same thing with 115, that is with UMDNJ for TV treatment, so they're all related. 116 is the annual renewal of our agreement with the Union County Conservation Center. The fees are $2 per yard for loose and $4 per yard respectively. 117, that's a complicated one, I'm going to just kind of refer to the local finance notice. I know you've had the opportunity to probably read some of the background. In sum, the state has made a recommendation that we adopt the SEC's recommendation that encourages us as government issuers of bond to self-identify any past non-compliance issues we've had. This is a statewide thing, this is not a Scotch Plains thing, where of the belief that we don't have any, we're going to be fine, but, you know, if you discover any kind of inadvertent error, even if it's inadvertent, you could be subject to penalties from the SEC. You know, by doing this enforcement, by self-identifying any issues that may have occurred in the past, it would lessen any possible enforcement actions against the town. The state strongly recommends that local government officials take the steps to self-identify their compliance. We're recommending that we do that with the assistance of our bond counsel and our auditors.
Okay.
And all the attachments are there. 118 is for loading and transporting the fall leaves to Reliable Wood Services of Jersey City. They had won the bid as a low bidder the last time we did this and were satisfied with their services and we're recommending a one-year addition to that. We're requesting under 119 to add $20,000 to our road materials from welding. As I mentioned, towards the end of last year, you know, when we were talking about the snow and actually in January, we just knew it was inevitable that with all the snow, we were going to get significantly more potholes, and this is directly related to fixing the potholes in the township. And number 120, it's that time to review the contract with Duke Multimedia, who does our public educational access channel, and the resolution is recommended to continue into that contract as well.
Council, should we take a roll call on this? Is money involved?
I can send you a special.
That's why I'm asking, that's, yeah, I'm agreeing.
But we still have reported special committees.
No, I have, we'll come back, we're not done, I skipped that, I apologize.
Okay.
Let's just finish this.
Can we ask for any-
Does anyone have a count?
Can we have any items polled if we want?
What's that?
Can we have any items polled if we'd like for discussion?
By all means, go ahead.
I guess item number 2014-120, the contract with Duke Multimedia, because I'd like to actually discuss that further amongst the whole council in the sense that, you know, I know what the current contract is and was last year, but I'd be interested in probably expanding the scope of that contract, in particular, looking for coverage beyond what we currently have, namely with respect to things like our conference meetings and live web streaming of whatever is being recorded here in the municipal hall rather than just on the television, such as perhaps zoning board meetings or planning board meetings or the like. So that this is in no way reflective of any dissatisfaction with the current provider, but I'd like to have a discussion and see if we could perhaps expand the scope of services for this, for this contract. I guess I would ask if we do that at a, you know, I guess appropriate time, we'd have a subsequent workshop meeting.
I think we've had that discussion, I've asked, and we think we have a unit cost if we wanted to expand it, correct, Mr. Giles?
We do, we generally hit the max of that, though, we've come pretty close.
Yeah, so we can revisit this.
Yeah, so if you were going to do those additions, it would certainly have to be a modification of the contract.
So with that, would we put that on for discussion next time, or do you want to vet this right now? I don't think we have enough information to-
I mean, I assume and hope that in the meantime, I don't know exactly when the current contract ends, that we could presumably continue as is, you know, a three-month renewal or a month-to-month or whatever.
We can always revisit the contract and whether it's approved in its entirety as a year or if you recommend, you know, another type of approval. The contract, the initial contract that was passed was done through, the process calls competitive contracting, and so the addition was for one year. You can make a modification to an extension of a contract on a month-to-month basis if you are actively in the process of working on RFPs to seek another company. I'm not sure if you can do that, I don't believe you can do that if you're just looking to change the scope of the existing contract. So if you were interested in changing the scope, and the attorney can weigh in on this, I believe what you would have to do is approve the contract as is and then look to, you know, modify that at a later time.
Does that satisfy you?
Yeah, I think that satisfies my interest.
No, I would just say that I agree with the councilman, and I think that this is something that we should just discuss a little bit further. I think there are some, some things that we might want to just chat about regarding, you know, the scope of the, of the services that are being provided, and I look forward to having that discussion, I guess, at next-
Conference, yeah.
-next meeting.
Okay, with that, any other comments?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to table Resolution 2014-120, please. Second that.
I have two things. Jerry, can you, oh.
We have, we have, yeah, exactly. If it's a concern of several of us, then I think we have a motion, we have a second, that we should take a roll call on this, please.
Mrs. Jolene Eller?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. So we're going to table 2014-120.
Um-
We haven't moved this yet, I just want everyone to know.
Yeah, okay, but, but the manager did walk, did walk us through a number of things.
Yes, he did.
So as part of his manager, I don't, I don't know-
No, we're going to go back to the manager's report in a second, if that's all right.
So I have a question on some of these agenda items. Should I wait until it's moved?
If you have a question about the resolution, bring them up.
Okay, so I believe based on advice that Mr. Lehr has given me in the past, that I have to abstain on 116, and on 117, can you walk me through that again? I'm sorry.
I'm just, there really is-
Is that the easy one, right?
There's, there's one paragraph that really spells it out, and just for the, I'm sure I didn't do it any justice in my explanation because it's very complicated stuff, so I'm just going to hit probably the most important paragraph, you know, in the local finance notice. Earlier this year, the SEC adopted a program to encourage local government issuers to self-identify past non-compliance and improve timely continuing disclosure in the future. Their program, known as Municipalities Continuing Disclosure Cooperation Initiative, essentially establishes lesser enforcement actions provided local government issuers and others self-identify past non-compliance and agree to a plan to prevent this in the future. You can read more about this on the website, long website name.
So I mean-
It is, let me just do this one more, this is actually the one I underlined. It is strongly recommended that local government officials proactively take steps to identify their own levels of compliance with the agreements. There were issues around the country with other towns, you know, having problems with their bonds or maybe even being dishonest when presenting information, you know, to their, to the raiders and the potential bond bidders.
As I said, you give an example, so that's the example you would give on something like this?
Yeah, that would be something that has happened in the past. Now, there are others where it was inadvertent.
Which is what?
Others where it was inadvertent, maybe they gave, they gave the wrong information and it wasn't on purpose, and for whatever reason, they weren't able to pay their bonds. We know there's states, there's towns and cities facing bankruptcies across the country, not many. You know, New Jersey municipalities would really almost never be in those situations because we're so highly regulated to begin with. You know, when you start issuing amounts of debt over a certain percentage, you need approval from this agency anyway, the state. So we would almost never have, even in our most struggling communities, we'd never have these issues when it comes to bonding anyway. So what we're doing is, you know, we're going to follow this advice, or we're recommending that we follow this advice and, you know, engage our auditors and our, you know, bond counsel, probably more specifically, you know, to provide the plan, which is spelled out on page three, has a very-
But this is not as the result of a specific concern?
Not in Scotch Plains.
That's all I was looking for clarification on. When you hear things like self-report and, you know, I mean, you want to just, I want to make sure that the public has a full understanding that this is, we are being, we're being responsible and we're double-checking, but not as a result of any specific concern. Okay.
The public should know that this notice went out to all 565 municipalities.
Is there a cost for doing this, Mr. Giles?
It'll be nominal, but it'll just be within the scope of the professional services agreement that we have.
So now, Councilwoman, you feel like you need to abstain from, you said once-
I thought that the conversation I had with Mr. Lehr in the past, I could be wrong, I don't predict my abstention as affecting the vote, and I'd rather not do something that I shouldn't.
Okay, so can we have a roll call now? I think we vetted this.
I'll, we'll roll call and then I'll-
Do you have any other questions?
You have a roll call then of 2014-112 through 115, and then 2014-117 through 116.
You're saying-
Can't we just roll call the same, the whole thing, and I'll just specify that I abstain on 116?
You should wish.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so-
And, and by the way, 112, we've figured out by now we can't find anybody any better, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was vetted out by Mr. La Costa before me, and I did the same thing. You know, the only reason of all services, we might actually get better services would be, you know, towns relatively too far away. And the area town, one of the area towns we reached out to, our neighboring town, just couldn't meet the scope of work that we required for the first.
About, because that was the interest based on the quality of services that they were getting in Westfield, but-
Yeah, and I can't speak to what happened before me and the satisfaction with the service. I know probably most of the council, if not all, were a little concerned, I can tell you that. You know, if there were problems before I got here, which I tend to agree that there probably were, I do think they've been alleviated, I've been working well with the Health Department at Wallway, we've had, you know, regular communications on issue, so if there were problems before me, I do believe that for the most part, they've been addressed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, let's proceed.
I'd like to move for approval, the consent agenda consisting of resolutions 2014, 112 through 119.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Jolene Eller?
Aye, with the exception of Resolution 2014-116, which is an abstention.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Thank you. I'm going to take us back a little, Mr. Giles, forgive me for overlooking your manager's report. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, everything I would have discussed was related to these agenda items.
Yeah, I saw it, so, okay, and I know that, I believe the Deputy Mayor may have something on special committees for housing issues.
Yes, yes, Mayor.
We don't want to miss that.
We don't, we don't. I have some information here from the Recreation Department, and I will read it now. Recreation announcements, the Fall Brochure, Fall Recreation Review is now available on the town's website, as well as registration for many of the programs are open. Please visit the website and look under the Recreation tab on the front page to find the brochure. Additionally, registration can be done online from the town's website by clicking the Community Pass link. Youth Basketball Registration. Our popular youth basketball program will begin registration on Thursday, September 4th. The program runs from November through March and is open to boys and girls in grades third through eighth, I remember it well. Field Hockey. The Recreation Commission is pleased to sponsor a new youth field hockey program, open to kids in grades three through eight. Program is a clinic for those who want to learn how to play the game, stressing fundamentals and fun. The program will take place Saturday afternoons beginning September 6th. Registration is open now. For any questions, please call our Recreation office at 908-322-6700, extension 223. Scotch Plains Day. Scotch Plains Day will take place on Sunday, October 5th, from noon to 5:00 PM on Park Avenue. For those interested in setting up a booth at that, at the day, info on how to register will be up on our website beginning next week. Additionally, the Lions Club will be running a car show in conjunction with the day, and info for that will be up on our website next week as well. on our website next week as well. For more information, please call the recreation office, 322-6700, extension 223. In addition, registration for senior fitness classes. The recreation commission is sponsoring their popular senior fitness classes, which return this fall. Registration for senior dance fitness, which is senior zumba, along with some additional fitness elements, as well as senior yoga, will begin Tuesday, September 16th at 8:30 a.m. Registration can be done in person at the recreation office or online using the Community Pass link on the website. Senior appreciation day. Recreation commission is sponsoring their annual senior appreciation day on Thursday, September 18th. On that day, all Scotch Plains senior residents are invited to come up to Shady Rest at Scotch Hills Country Club to play a round of golf or mini-golf for free. Additionally, the commission is sponsoring a free bingo at 11 a.m. as well as a barbecue lunch at noon. There's no pre-registration required. And lastly, senior transportation. Transportation for residents who are senior citizens is available and provided free of charge by the township. Our bus service includes transportation to senior social clubs, shopping and mall trips, as well as medical transportation on an as-needed basis. To register or for more information, please contact our dial-a-ride number, 908-322-5151. For information on any of these programs, please contact the recreation office, 322-6700, extension 223.
Does anyone else have a special committee report that they'd like to share?
I do not, because I, as the liaison to the fire department, have not met yet in two years with the fire department.
Still working on that.
Still waiting.
I actually ran it to the fire chief in the parking lot the other day and encouraged him to call you and schedule that. He said he was going to get around to it.
All right, thank you. That was very nice. We work as a team. Okay. With that, we have other new business, which is our bill list resolution. You know, we've got $11,806,000, so dollars. Before we move forward on that, does anyone have a question about that?
Unfortunately, I feel like I have to abstain because I haven't had a chance to review it. It only came to us late today, and I was in transit. And I'm, I'm sorry. I don't have enough information.
So what's that, councilor?
Are we, are we voting on that, or is this just an opportunity to ask questions?
Other new...
Is there just some question? Because we got it late today.
So...
We got it around half...
We are or not voting on it?
Well, I think the expectation is we're going to vote on it, but I'd like to ask...
Jeff has advised that for the purpose of tonight's meeting, while he's in the process of finalizing his opinion, that you could vote on it. But he also did advise in the, in the same email, that, you know, from all practical purposes, these monies were encumbered through the purchase order process, through the contractual process, and there is really no legal authority to withhold the payments to any of these vendors. So it's an odd thing.
An odd meaningless vote.
I, I, um, I wouldn't suggest that it's not odd, but I, you know, I'm not comfortable voting without time to review the information.
Anybody else have a comment on that? We did get it late.
I guess my, my final comment is I do think we should access and review the information. I think it's important that we review it. I'm glad that we review it. But from a legal perspective, it would be odd to vote against something when the funds are already encumbered.
Yeah, but we can ask questions, clearly, okay? That's the intent. And I have a question...
All documented, you can see it.
Yeah, exactly. There's no, there's no secret here. I saw a payment on there. Once again, I thought we had final payment for the pavilion. I think there's another $16,000. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't pay them, contrary, because that would be silly and not proper, but what is that 16, what is that additional payment for?
I just don't have voucher in front of me, so I can't answer.
See, so you can't vote on it because you don't have the fact? That's the problem, I think, that the councilwoman was alluding to. No one sees it. Well, listen, I, I mean, we want people to get paid. I, I don't see Barton Ross, you know, an invoice from him on here. I think we've all said much good about him. I hope we will pay him, you know, soon.
The only very recently submitted invoice.
Okay, well, that's good. So I want to make sure he gets paid because we all, you know, had nothing but accolades to say about him, and he gave us a pretty aggressive fee. I have, I just have one concern to your comment and to the email note we received earlier in the day. You know, I don't know what council Lehrer, and Lehrer is looking for, okay? I mean, there should be no secrets about the bill list. I mean, he's looking for a legal opinion. If, if he needs one, I'd be willing to give him one. I think it's a statutory requirement that the council see a bill list, okay, and that they pass it by resolution. So I'm concerned that he might not agree to that because last meeting, he said we don't have to see one going forward, and I think he supported it. And also, just for the record, if someone needs to go look at our administrative code, it's in our administrative code that the council needs to have a bill list to review. Now, whether or not we can hold payment, that's secondary to the fact that we have a fiduciary responsibility to our citizens to review what, in today, will be $11 million bill. So again, I'm, I'm quite confused as to what legal opinion, Mr. Jimes, councilor, that Mr. Lehrer is...
You have two very conflicting statutes in your municipal code.
What's that?
You have two, actually, you have two very conflicting statutes in your municipal code.
Okay.
So you're referring to one, and then there's another one. There's two that actually say the opposite.
And what about state statutes?
There's, you adopt your code. It's a code issue. Every town has a different code.
Let me, let me ask you. Then, you know, then we can discuss this further, maybe at a conference meeting. I mean, is there someone here that believes that this council, is there's a councilman here, deputy mayor, that wouldn't want to see a bill list if that's what's being proposed?
The, the issue is not, never whether the council can see a bill list.
No, no, see it, and before we vote on it, because we're to vote on it.
The issue is whether or not it would be voted on. You have, there are three different sections of our municipal code. One of them, they're, they're just conflicting. They say two completely different things.
I, maybe I can...
One of them says the council votes, the other one says the manager approves. So you have two completely different...
Well, I'm going to weigh in on the elected officials, okay, that have a responsibility. And for eight years, I've served as council, and it is clear to me by state statute that the, you know, recognizing we should go by our administrative code, but I think there's some precedent out there for, forever.
There's case law precedent, as in about a month ago, as if otherwise.
Well, the bottom line is I would be troubled that you would not, or Ms. Lehrer would not want this council to see, which we have seen, some of us here for four years that newly, you know, got elected last go-round. Myself, who's been here eight years, and I'm certain if you turn the clock back to whomever, whatever administration, there was absolute consistency here on this front. So it will be, it will be continued, if, if, you know, it will be continued. I think our council needs, I think...
Can I ask a question?
I think our council needs to see bills.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you.
No one disagrees with seeing the bills.
No, seeing them and voting on it.
Can I...
Actually conflicting one, I'm sorry.
This is true.
So I appreciate the fact that very few people read the administrative code, but I would have expected that the attorney would be well-versed in it. So I just, with that said, my question is this. Was direction given to explore this, and how much are we going to spend researching whether or not the council votes on the bill list?
There'll be very little, I mean, in terms of money. How it was brought to the council was, we became aware of a case that discussed a bill list and it was spelled.
How did, but, I mean, just to, just out of curiosity, how, how, what prompted that dialogue?
A case came across my desk, and I asked you if I have to look into it.
Okay. I mean, and you as the manager, it's well within your purview. I just was asking how that started. Thank you for satisfying my curiosity.
I just, I feel the need to say, you said something about your partner, not the commissioner. Oh, my understanding is just the opposite of the issue. He's familiar with the code, just conflicting divisions in the...
No, actually, I think if we read back my comment, it was, my comment was that my expectation would be that he would be familiar with the administrative. It wasn't that he's not. My expectation, well, no, for the previous, it was a response to a previous comment by the manager that most people don't read the administrator code.
I understand. I just want to make a point.
No, we don't...
Well, no, so, so I just want to make sure that my point is clear then. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I just want to...
It's, it's the, it's the law of this town. And I, I, I think that Mr. Lehrer served us well, but if we're going to talk about being, not being familiar and not reading something, I would want to make sure that we're clear on our expectation.
And, and councilor, just... No, you, you, I agree. No, we're not directing this toward you, but I'm directing it to Mr. Jimes. If, if for some reason, out of the blue, in eight years, that someone feels that this council should do something different than it's done for probably 28 years, I, I think, I really have a problem with that.
The answer is, a case within the last month came across my desk, and I forwarded it to the attorney to look at. I mean, we get cases all the time. We get, you know, cases every day.
I just hope it's not because we asked too many questions. But that said, we need to...
You still ask the questions because you'll still see the bill list.
Okay. Mr. Jimes, to be continued. I'm sorry.
I had to respond.
If I may, Mayor, having not spoken on this, to be perfectly clear, there is not a problem with seeing the bill list, touching the bill list, smelling the bill list, being one with the bill list. The question is whether we have the authority to vote for or against the bill list. And it's not a matter of what was done for last year or the last eight years. It's a matter of what our ordinance is in conflict with itself, and it came to their attention. And at the very least, whether we agree as a council to vote on the bill list or not, we've got to reconcile the ordinance to be one or the other.
I think you're 100% right, because there may, if there are those conflicts. But I would be deeply troubled if you felt that we could smell it, we could look at it, we could see it, but something that we've done had forever in this township, that all of a sudden, someone would suggest that...
No one is.
Okay. Well, I'm glad. I just wanted to hear that, because then we could have some campaign literature. But I don't want to go there. I, we have a bill list on the table, and I'd ask that it be, be moved. So with that, deputy mayor, can we move the bill list, please?
Mr. Rizzo, am I safe to move this for approval?
I, I got to tell you, councilor, you're having fun tonight, right? You're earning your keep.
I would like to move for approval. The bill list resolution in the amount of $11,806,521.86.
Is there a second? Second. May we have a roll call?
This is Jill Lella.
Abstain.
Aye.
Mr. Marcus.
Aye.
Mr. Vasquez.
Aye.
Mayor Glover.
Aye. Council comments?
So I have a couple things.
Please.
Can you just have involve Costa's questions?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Thank you. Thank you. We do have one new, other piece of business, as we spoke in our conference. Deputy mayor, I'd like you to move resolution 2014-111.
Okay, I'd like to move for approval. Resolution 2014-111, supporting international residential code requirement for fire sprinklers in one and two-family dwellings and townhouses.
Is there a second?
Aye.
There is a second. Councilor, roll call. There we go.
Is there any comment?
Well, does anyone have, we had a...
I think we should...
...alertly discussion before we want to discuss anything?
Specify what this is, because the type, the way, the description of the resolution almost seems like we're enacting a local ordinance. What we're doing is we're encouraging the governor, my understanding is to approve this piece of legislation.
And the Senate?
And, and the Senate, I'm sorry. I just want, I, I, you know, so this is, this is not a, this is, I don't know how to, it's a, it's a token act, for lack of a better word. That's not the right choice of words, but we're not enacting a local law here.
This is true.
My, my view is, I mean, ultimately, this decision is going to be made by the state legislature and the governor. So, you know, I, I don't know if it's really necessary for us to weigh in on it, but I'm prepared to do that.
Thank you very much. We've done this before, as we all know. Are you ready to go home? No. Roll call, please.
If I may, Mayor.
Would you have a comment, please?
I don't support this, because my concern is that this additional cost will end up costing jobs of carpenters and other people that are involved with the building trades. I think in New Jersey, it's something that ultimately, we all know, is already expensive. And I think adding to that expense, albeit for the purpose of saving lives and property, as I stated earlier, I believe there's probably other solutions to that, other than this.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to one more try, check, one more run at this to ask for a roll call. Does someone have a comment before Ms. LaCena makes the call? Ms. LaCena, please.
This is Jill Lella.
Um, aye.
Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Marcus.
Aye.
Mr. Vasquez.
No.
Mayor Glover.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Council comments?
I have several things under council comments.
Please.
I don't, I didn't really know where to put this, so I'm going to put it under council comment, because I'm really asking that we revisit this. Back in March, I think I first raised the request to have a discounted or free rate for the volunteers of the township as far as the EMS and the fire department at the Shady Rest at Scotch Hills. There was some correspondence between our recreation director and our township manager in March, and recently, in, in the end of July, after our last meeting, that was sent to me by the, by our manager. Essentially, the correspondence is saying that it has been considered and was implemented in the past. The thought process was this potentially could be used as a recruiting process to attract or maintain additional members. The chief, nor I, did not necessarily agree, necessarily agree that it's significant impact on its enrollment, and it didn't. There were only a few people ever requested a few rounds, but I will let them weigh in here. It's just something you'd like to see me brought to the commissioners. So I'm just unclear about whether or not it's been brought to the commissioners. I mean, and, you know, with respect to the email, I don't, unless there is a massive recruitment effort that I don't know about, I don't know what we are doing to recruit. My concern was less of a recruitment and more of a, an offering of recognition for the efforts of our volunteers. I mean, these are not simple tasks that these people are volunteering for. And I, if we have something available to us, and we do, we have this incredible asset in our community, why could we just not make it available to them for free? It literally would cost us nothing to do this.
I'm glad you bring that, you know, forward again, because you, you have been an avid supporter of that measure, to which I'll only add, you know, we had on the table doing something for our veterans, and I was at a concert recently and asked one of them, you know, so did anything go up, get posted? Are we doing anything for you? Says, nothing. So again, Mr. Jimes, I'll go back. I don't know how deputy mayor, you know, that, that, that ended up with giving our veterans some kind of break. It may be akin to what we do, at least for our seniors.
Yeah, I, you know, I know this has been mentioned before, and what I'm going to do is, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to confirm this information with Mr. Poreo and the recreation commission. It is important. And I, I don't want to misstate what has happened. It has been discussed. I don't really recall...
Something was done for the veterans.
Yeah, for the veterans, I think that's correct.
But it wasn't identified, I believe. I'm sorry to interrupt.
We didn't identify it, because clearly, they don't know.
Uh, what, I, I just, you know, I don't want to misrepresent the recreation commission as not having done something for the veterans, because I do remember that that dialogue did happen. I believe there was a reluctance to reopen the ordinance. So it was, that's where the language, there was, something was done. I don't think it's identified within ordinance.
All we need to do is post a sign at the counter where they sign it.
I'm, I'm just, I...
Okay, that's it. We shouldn't make this, you know, rocket scientist stuff.
Right. I think that's pretty much...
Right. I think that's pretty much what was, uh, what was discussed.
So, um, I have just a couple more things.
Okay.
Um, so today is my father's sixty-fifth birthday and, um-
Happy birthday.
I did wanna wish him a happy birthday and this is a special birthday. It's somewhat of a sad birthday because at the end of this week, my father will retire, um, after joining the sheriff's department in nineteen seventy-eight and literally working at every rank in that department, um, working to the way of undersheriff. He will be, his last day of work will be, um, the sixteenth. And, um, I know that he is very sad. I'm very sad for him and, um, you know, in my official capacity, I would like to express a debt of gratitude for what I know was his utmost commitment to the people of Union County for, for many, many years. Um, I have two other things that I wanted to report out on. I just wanted to remind everyone that obviously, the annual tradition of the Italian festival, Saint Bartholomew's, will be coming up before we know it. It's only a couple weeks away. I would encourage members of the community to consider volunteering. It is a fantastic community event. It is an excellent way to end the summertime. There's so much tradition rooted in really seeing everybody there Monday and kinda celebrating the, um, return to the school year. Um, and I hope that many members of the public enjoy it and purchase their super fifty-fifty tickets. Um, to that end, I'd also like to encourage the public to look for information about the upcoming Harlem Wizards fundraiser um, for the Scotch Plains Fanwood Unico event. That will be occurring on October third, um, at the high school. Our very own Chief Mahoney has agreed to play in the game against the Wizards, as has, um, our local freeholder, Al Marabella, and, um, the game will also be played in by, um, the Fanwood Police Chief, Rich Trigo, as well. So, I have more information if anyone is looking for information on that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have?
I, I, I do, Mayor. I have one item that I just wanted to discuss briefly and that is, um, in reading the, the, the paper, the Scotch Plains Times last week, I took note that the, um, Fanwood Council acted upon the, um, the parking permit, uh, cost for the train station in Fanwood. And I know in speaking with a lot of residents in town, a lot of people feel that, uh, perhaps Scotch Plains residents are not being charged, um, as modestly as they would like for use of the train station. I used to commute and park at the train station myself. Um, I, I had some misgivings myself about the arrangement and the way that the parking permits were put up for sale in terms of their offering to Scotch Plains residents. And I say this all with, with the greatest respect to the Fanwood Council. Uh, if I understand what happened, uh, they did make a final decision and I guess passed a resolution to increase the, uh, fees charged for parking at the train station for Scotch Plains residents from, I believe, six hundred and fifty dollars to, I think, seven hundred dollars. And that's quite a, a, a big difference between what the Fanwood residents pay. I think they pay, um, about three hundred and sixty dollars or something in that neighborhood. Now, that's certainly their prerogative, but, um, you know, considering that I sit here on behalf of the people of Scotch Plains and I've heard from many people that they do feel that the cost is, is higher than it should be. And, uh, perhaps somehow, we can engage in some type of communication with the Fanwood Council just to pass on those concerns on behalf of our residents to see whether there might be some way of, uh, adjusting that fee or, you know, looking towards the future perhaps. But I, I, I think it is something that is relevant, should be discussed. It is something that's been talked about, uh, over the years. And, um, you know, a, a, again, perhaps through the council, the manager, or through a combination of the, the two offices, we can relay that to our friends in Fanwood and perhaps make some inroads there.
Thank you. Very good comment.
So, I just have one last thing and I apologize. I forgot to, um, mention it previously, but, um, Jerry, you may, may or may not have seen on some of the, um, local social networking forums a lot of discussion lately about what is being described as a rash of break-ins into cars. Um, I, I think that that may be a bit of a misnomer. Um, I wonder if we could send out a communication that would help people understand how to protect their car and maybe, um, maybe explain that. My concern is that sometimes the lack of information tends to lead to an over, um, I don't, I think you know what I'm saying. I mean, to my knowledge, and I'm asking, I mean, to your knowledge, has there been a, a rash of break-ins into cars?
Yeah, I haven't been advised of anything. You, maybe out of your area, it's been current now, so I don't, I don't remember.
Okay.
Possible, you know, what happens to those situations where maybe one day it happened, a couple times on one block. And that's kinda where people are from, but I am not, you know, maybe where any increases in situation that's after order.
Could you, I, and you'll share that with the police chief and maybe i- if, if he feels that there's, you know, I, I think it might be nice just to remind people about some good practices, you know, as far as keeping their car secure. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment? I'm down toward you, Councilor. Okay, public comment. I see a couple of people from the public here. Once again, please state your name and your address.
Fans, eight, six, one, Westfield Road, Scotch Plains. Just two comments. I guess, uh, Mr. Marcus, I was confused 'cause I thought that Scotch Plains and Fanwood residents were paying the same and out-of-town residents are paying more. If that's not the case, then I have a concern about that because almost every school that Fanwood kids participate in is on our property with the exception of, um, McGinn's, not, not the one, school one.
They all are. I think school ones in Scotch Plains.
Right. Is it?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
See, I have a problem with that and then it goes back to, should we be talking again, shared services? And I think we should. I, I think we draw the line and they want so much and we have to give so much. And I'm hoping Shady Rest draws so many people into this town that we're gonna have to build hotels and everything else. And my last comment, Colleen, I read the police blotter all the time in Westfield, Mountainside, Scotch Plains, and Fanwood. And I cannot believe how many peoples have had things stolen out of their cars, GPSs, laptops. But the cars are unlocked. I cannot imagine anybody leaving that stuff and not locking your car. And if I were a police officer, I'd almost refuse to make out a report. You're asking for a problem if you, it's an open invitation. Here's my GPS, here's my laptop, come and get it. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Enjoy the rest of your summer. Hopefully, Thursday will be good weather.
Thank you. I hear it will be. Uh, one last thing to do, ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to still tune in. Uh, we have a phone number here, three, two, 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 zero, seven, six. That's in the council chambers. The number again, nine, zero, eight, three, two, 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 zero, seven, six. If you have a comment of your council, a question of your council, please call the number. Well, I'll be. Hello? Hello?
Hello. This is Linda Massey at eight forty-one West Hill Road. I know you passed the ordinance regarding to the parking and runner, but I have not ever heard that there was any initiative taken to look into your terrace having an entrance through the school property that can take them to the back of the school with maybe a circle for a turnaround?
That, I believe that had been discussed and it was-
Is that-
It's the mirror, parrot coming into sideways into the property of the school and, uh-
It's coming in the back of the school?
Yeah, we're aware of that, yes. I believe that was discussed and it was, uh, ruled out as a, as a viable option.
Do you know why?
There, um-
I felt that there were safety issues, uh, related, you know, to the egress and the entry, uh, of, of the cars coming there, uh, navigating that small piece of paved area. There was a serious incline just because of the grading. Uh, children would be dropped off of course and would have to confront with cars rapidly looking to exit the parking lot.
I missed, I missed the, um, young lady identify herself.
Okay, you, identify yourself one more time, ma'am.
Yes, it's Linda Massey, eight forty-one West Hill Road.
I believe that was the explanation.
I find that interesting because that property, to me, is very wide for a two-lane driveway that seems to be able to go to the back of the school. Now, the school may have to do something to rearrange the playground area, but we're all making amends here, you know, because I cannot pull out of my driveway and I am down further than Woodland Avenue.
I, I, I understand that, that issue about the playground came up as well. I'm just conveying what, you know, our consultants, our experts, our professionals, you know, uh, looked into and, you know, commented on. And I think that's the-
I didn't hear the engineer ever speak about that being an option. It was always just the other two roads. And I, I just think that's a lot of area there that the school needs to do something about. I don't think it's a town issue. So, that's, that's all I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking my call.
Thank you, ma'am. We're here for another minute or so. Safe bet? It's ten thirty on Tuesday evening. I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
A fourth, a third? All those in favor, aye, aye. Good night, everybody.